The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. How are you tonight? Thank you so much for coming out to this forum regarding some work that's been ongoing in the town of Plainville regarding water quality issues. My name is Kathy Paglisi. I'm the chairperson of the Plainville Town Council. I'm going to do a few opening remarks and then our town manager, Robert Lee, will be moderating the event tonight, so I think it's going to be informative. I learned a lot through this process and I'm sure tonight you're going to learn some things that you may not have been aware of. But before I begin, I'd like to introduce a few of my fellow council members. Deb Tompkins is in the front row here. Rosemary Moranti is in the second row. And Danny Carrier is in the fourth row. So these are your elected officials on the town council. They have been informed of these results and they're here to listen to the public and to understand what some of your concerns are. As we know, water is a resource that is invaluable to every town in every community. It's important for a number of things. We use it for recreation. We use it for cooking. We use it for bathing. We use it for public safety. Our fire department needs to have a reliable source of water in the event that a fire should occur. So as you can understand, our water and our water supply is extraordinarily important and we want to make sure that we keep everything in the best possible function. Tonight what I'm going to do is you're going to meet the individuals who have been working on some questions and concerns that have arisen recently. Over the past several months, there's been a group of people, I've been involved with it, Councilwoman Moranti has been involved with this committee, along with a number of people from our state agencies and our town resources. So we've been meeting over several months. There was some in-depth study done. There were samples taken and tonight you're going to learn about that and you're going to learn about what the results of that were. At the end of the evening, when everybody has finished with their presentation, we welcome questions from the audience. So if you could please hold your questions until the end of the presentation, we'd be very happy to hear from you. This is how we can communicate back and forth and understand the concerns of our community and you can hear back from the experts that really know about what's happening with our water system and how it's going to affect our community going forward. So once again, thank you so very much for coming tonight. And with that, I'd like to introduce Robert Lee, our town manager.
Thank you very much and I would like to welcome everyone to our forum this evening. This process began several months ago as a result of my view on social media that there was, you know, some issues that come up and it seems to be the way that people express themselves nowadays and a lot more easier to communicate. But shortly after that, I know that Dr. Pettit also monitors social media as well and he called me and said, hey, let's collaborate together and see if we can address this issue and make people feel comfortable about the private water company that supplies water in Plainville. And I think the way you get there is to understand how our system works, how the system works, who's responsible for the system, who's responsible for overseeing the system. We had some meetings of staff and some people from the state and did some extensive testing and what we'd like to do is talk about the results of those tests this evening and more importantly, to answer any questions that people might have after the presentation is over. We have brought in a lot of experts here this evening, people who are responsible for overseeing the system, not only in Plainville but in the state of Connecticut. So I'd like to at least introduce a few people who are here this evening before we get started. So Dr. Pettit is here. Plainville is part of a regional health district, the Plainville-Southington Health District, and Shane Lockwood is our health director. From the Public Utilities Regulatory Agency, we have Frank Ogierri, who's here this evening, who will be speaking. He also has a couple of staff people that he will be introducing at that time as well. For the Department of Public Health, who really looks at the quality issues, we have Lori Matthew, who is here tonight, who's in charge of the water division. We have Tom Chira, Brian Toll, Vicky Carrier, Mike Hage, and Austin McMahon. From Valley Water Company, we have three members of the board, Don Vaughn, Nick LaChance, and Bill Gauske. Don Vaughn also happens to be the president of the Valley Water Company. And we have Tom Hanson, who's a consultant for Valley Water and I think they'll be presenting as well. Now, we do have an agenda. If you haven't received an agenda, just raise your hand and my assistant, Scott, will hand those out. We do have a spreadsheet of all the test results. I would like to point out that the test results, you know, you'll see for each category, you'll see two numbers side by side. The top number is the testing that was done by the Department of Health and the red number, which is below it, is that Valley Water did some simultaneous testing. And so those numbers, we just figured we'd put them together. And I think by and large, what those numbers show is that, you know, the test results are pretty similar, are very similar. So, you know, for those who say, you know, who may speculate about the validity of the testing that's done by Valley Water, just because they're doing the testing, you know, what we've seen from these tests is that they're very similar and they're done by independent testing labs to begin with. So without further ado, I think we'll start with Frank Ogierri from the Public Utilities Regulatory Agency and he'll explain the role that they have overseeing public water supplies as well as private water companies. Frank?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Trent Ogierri. I'm with the Connecticut Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. I'd first like to thank Robert Lee in the town of Plainville for the opportunity to speak with all of you tonight. I was asked to provide a description of my agency's responsibilities. I'll try to keep this brief. I'm sure you want to move on to the matter at hand. For those of you who don't know, the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, or also known as PURA, was formerly known as Department of Public Utility Control. Our agency is now part of the Energy Branch within the state's Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. PURA's primary responsibility is regulating the rates and services of Connecticut's investor-owned utility companies such as Valley Water, EverSource, Connecticut Natural Gas. So for those agencies, excuse me, for those industries who regulate, our goal is to balance the public's right to a safe, adequate, and reliable utility service at reasonable rates with the provider's right to a reasonable return of its investment. So in addition to this great regulation responsibility, we also maintain a Consumer Affairs Unit. The Consumer Affairs Unit is where you would go if you need help, if you have a question or complaint, complaint about billing, complaint about service. We can also help you or assist you if you've received a shut-off notice and you need help negotiating a payment arrangement. Generally, any type of question that you have with the quality of service or billing from your utility company, that's why you would call the Consumer Affairs Unit. We only ask that you do one thing first and that's call the utility company first. Give them the opportunity to help you out. You might not like their answer, you can call us, but you really should give the company the first attempt at helping your problem out. And if they can't satisfy you, by all means, call us. We're available by telephone, email, US mail. We have a website where you can do an online complaint form. If you're in New Britain, you can stop in and we'll take your complaint in person. I'll provide our contact information at the end of this meeting. I intend to stay along with my staff, Mary Ellen Zhang and Maria Zoll. We're going to stay through to the end of this public information session, so feel free to come up, introduce yourself if you have questions, whether it's Valley Water or any of the other regulated utilities in Connecticut. We'll stay here and we'll answer your questions for you. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Lori Matthew and ask her to come forward. She's from the Department of Public Health and she will get into the water test results and what it means.
Well, good evening. How is everyone? We're good. Excellent. My name, first of all, I want to say thank you to the town of Plainville and to Robert We represent the State Department of Public Health. Robert, introduce a number of my staff here. My name is Lori Matthew. I am the section chief of the Drinking Water Section within the State Department of Public Health. We are responsible for all public water systems statewide. So can I walk and be heard at the same time over here or no? Because I need to move slides.
We do have a microphone that you can carry with you.
That I can carry?
No. Scott will get it for you.
Okay. Thank you. Is it on? It's on? Okay. Thank you. So I want to introduce my staff and I know Robert did that briefly. But Tom Chira, Tom, if you could stand up. Tom's going to be presenting on the details in a moment after I get done. Austin McMahon, he's with us, and Vicky Carrier, Michael Hage. And those are our, under my group, we have about 45 engineers and environmental analysts that oversee all of the public water systems statewide. And there are eight or 10 regulated, rate-regulated, public water systems in the state of eight or 10. But there are over 2,550 public water systems that the Health Department regulates for water quality, water quantity issues. So there's a lot of information coming in and a lot of oversight that my agency oversees for all of the state's public water systems. I also want to introduce Brian Toll, who's going to speak at the end. And Brian is a very seasoned, very experienced epidemiologist within the Health Department and he is excellent at explaining the health effects for what has been found within the water and will be at the end of our presentation. So, let me go back. So you would think in a small state that we have a few systems and just a few sources. You know, we're a very, very small state, but we're not set up that way and you might think, well, why is that? Well, in a state like ours, every village back 200 years ago had their own little system and that's how every town has grown up. And your town of Plainville is not unlike other towns within the state where you have your own sources of supply and you serve your area with the sources of supply. And you might be connected to other water systems that surround you and Plainville and Valley Water is connected in a number of areas to other systems. But you have your own town and you have your own service area and you serve, Valley Water serves about 16,000 people within your municipalities. And that's not unlike other towns in the state of Connecticut. Not unlike. So we have quite a few public water systems and a public water system is also a Dunkin' Donuts with their own well. Like in my town, I live in Coventry and we have 28 public water systems. You might say, why is that? Well, the church with a well, the Dunkin' Donuts with a well, the CVS with a well, the schools with a well, the firehouse. Every one of those is a regulated public water system that has to take samples, is responsible for their water quality, their water quantity, and provides that information electronically into our database system. My engineers inspect those systems every three or five years. They also oversee the water quantity and the water quality. And if there's any change, anywhere, quality, quantity, that's our responsibility to react and work with the water system to make sure that any and all items are addressed. And that includes complaints and working with the water company and the people that would call and complain and have concerns, lack of water, lack of water pressure, poor water quality, you know, the water tastes different today. We get a lot, the water looks brown, has a different color. We get involved with many, many of those types of calls and we answer and respond to about 40 to 60 complaints a year usually. So there's a lot of work to do. We work in two areas. The state of Connecticut and the regulation of public water systems has been around for about 100 years. Early 1900s, they started building treatment plants, they started developing water systems for, not only for consumption, but you mentioned fire protection as well. It's a big part of this. And having the water in the pipes for fire protection is very, very important. And so we've been, on the state side, have a whole host of state requirements that are quality and quantity. But also in the 70s, along comes EPA and starts the Safe Drinking Water Act and has been amended and updated continuously for about 40 years. So we're responsible for two things, state law, federal law. We take the federal law and put it into state rules and regulations and pass those and enforce all of that. So it's not only quality that we oversee, we also oversee quantity as well. So we're quite busy with those 2,550 systems that we're inspecting, we're overseeing, we're answering questions, we work and oversee the water companies. We are regulators of the water companies statewide. So the, and the community system serves just about 3 million people within the state. The remainder of the population, about 500,000 or 600,000 people, are served by private Now, the sampling within your town, or I think Robert called me or emailed me back in December, it was before Christmas, and he said, shared information that he had been seeing information on Facebook and that he had been seeing quite a bit of concern on behalf of the people that were consuming water. There were lots of complaints. And he wanted to share that with me and we spent some time talking about what that meant. And then we talked about what could be done, like what could be done, what could we do? And we talked about different options. And we said, well, why don't we get a meeting together? Why don't we sit down with the water company and go through what we could do and develop a plan, working together? Because there were so many complaints that were getting received and there were so many comments out there that we wanted to make sure that we could fully understand what was happening. We worked with Shane Lockwood. We brought everyone to the table and we had a first meeting and we decided to develop a plan, a sampling plan. And we had a lot of great thoughts on the table, such as, we're going to take samples. We offered the assistance of my engineers to take the samples themselves, who are fully trained in taking samples. But not only doing that, but bringing those samples for free, bring them to the state lab. We have a state lab facility in Rocky Hill and we wanted to do that and we offered that assistance. Also, I think it was our Dr. Pettit who said, well, why don't we do dual sampling at the same time? You know, why don't we make sure that when we're sampling, that also Shane's out there sampling and also the water company's pulling samples? So we, and Tom will get into more of the details on all of what we did and how we did it and the spreadsheets that you have, you know, show the details of all of those results. But we wanted to be comprehensive. So if we're going to spend the time, and we spent a lot of time thinking this through with the town, where's Scott? Where is Scott? Scott in the back. It's a tremendous resource in your town. Thinking through what to do next, where to go, where to sample, where are the locations? Let's spread it out. Let's not go to just where a few people had the complaints, but where, look where everybody had complaints. Where are they within your town, within the system? Map it out and let's be smart about where to pull the samples from. So you'll see a map and Tom will get into the details of the locations that we pulled samples from. And we spent a lot of time doing that and he'll go through the details. But it was definitely a very well-thought-out plan based upon what we had seen from you and from the complaints that were being received. So the representative samples are throughout not only municipal and town buildings, but also your own homes, your own apartments. So in one time, at one chance, because I told Tom, I wanted to go out myself, spend a little bit of time in the sampling process. So I did that with Tom and Austin and I got a chance to meet Heidi. Is Heidi here? No. But I talked to Heidi a little bit and, you know, she gave me some insight and she said that, you know, I want to be able to drink the water. Why can't I drink the water? There's just, it's, this doesn't, it's not appealing to me. So we had a conversation about that. And we told her what we were doing and how we're going to do it and that we're going to get back and we're going to have this forum and then we could talk it out. So here's a map and I think, we don't, we're not handing this out, but we have big copies of the map. Scott?
We do, we're going to post it online.
Okay. So we, here's the map and we identified where we were going and where we were sampling from and again, based upon the complaints and we didn't focus in on one area or another. And as a matter of fact, when we were pulling this presentation together two days ago, my commissioner came to me and said, Lori, did you spread out the sampling? Did you talk to local health? Did you work? I said, yes, yes. Let me explain to you what we did. Because she had exactly, I think, what some of you were probably thinking, well, maybe you just focused over here and over here, over here. We spread out the samples. We were pretty smart about where we went and why we did what we did. And, and what Tom is going to go through and then what Brian will explain, is what did we sample for? What are the parameters? And why did we pick those parameters? You know, what was found and what does that mean as far as health? So there was a lot of work done, a lot of thought process that went into the locations in your town. So there were 32 location samples sampled and there were two rounds. And Valley Water, as we mentioned, had their staff and they conducted their own sampling on the same dates. So when we were, my engineers were out sampling, Shane was out sampling, your local health director was out sampling, Valley Water was also there sampling at the same time. So the information that's on your spreadsheet shows the results of those samples. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tom, get into the details. Again, Tom Chira, he's a PE. He's been with us for about 18 years, 19 years, that's close. And he's in charge of our field unit that also oversees all the field inspections, all system inspections, as well as water quality oversight. And so here's Tom Chira. Thanks, Tom.
I think we'll use this one. Unlike Lori, I like to stand behind a podium, so I'm going to stand here. So Lori had talked about how we had developed the sampling plan and, you know, one of the important things that we did was we didn't want to just sample from locations that had submitted the water quality complaints. So we wanted to get a mix of homeowners who filed formal complaints to the town and those that didn't, just so we can kind of compare the results and see if there's anything different between those who formally filed a complaint and those who did it. As Lori mentioned, there's a total of 32 locations that we sampled. Shane and his staff on April 6th, they went out and they sampled a mix of 18 commercial and municipal locations throughout town. And then a week later, on April 12th, Austin, myself, and Scott from town Plainville, we went out and we sampled 14 residential locations. And as Lori had indicated, Valley Water had their operators present on both dates and they shadowed us and collected their own samples. Frank, can you go down? So I just want to give a very quick overview of how we collected the samples. We didn't just go out there and open a tap. We do have a standard operating procedure that the state lab in Rocky Hill had given us for how to actually collect the samples, so that they're done consistently and that they're done the right way. For the residential sampling, those were primarily collected from outdoor spigots. And for the samples that we collected, that Austin collected and myself, we ran the water from the spigot for at least four minutes. And we actually timed that to make sure that that water was run for at least four minutes. And during the sampling, we actually went to one sample location where the homeowner was home and he actually had a very good question for us. He said, why are you letting the water run? Why not just sample the water right away? Don't you want to sample the water that's in my house? And the idea is we're trying, the reason why we run the water for four minutes is because you want to bring water that's in the distribution system out in the street. This is the water that Valley Water is providing to its customers. That's the water that we're trying to sample to see what the water quality is of the water that's actually being delivered to the customers. Sometimes, you know, when the water gets inside the home, it's hard to say if that water's being altered in any way, if you have a hot water heater that hasn't been serviced for 20 years. So the idea is you're collecting water from the street, you're getting a representation of the water that's being supplied to your home. And as Lori mentioned, all 32 of these samples were then delivered to the state public health laboratory in Rocky Hill for analysis. Just for visual purposes, we just want to show you one, what a typical sampling looks like. Vicky, you want to just, and then there's some sample bottles up in the front there I asked my staff to, just to bring, so people can see what they look like. It's basically a half-gallon container and, what is that, 250?
Yeah, 500.
500. So that's, and basically what we do is we open up the spigot, we let the water run for four minutes, as I had mentioned, and then we literally just fill the sample bottles. So I just want to talk about some of the parameters that we tested for. So the primary chemicals that we sampled for are what's called sanitary chemicals. Vicky had mentioned this morning, sometimes they call them a standard potability test. And what sanitary chemicals are, is they are a general, broad suite of parameters that gives you a general idea as to the potability and to the aesthetic quality of drinking water. And when we get complaints and we go out and we investigate across the whole state, this is typically what we would sample for during our investigation, these sanitary chemicals. And just to give you an idea of what they consist of, it's the color, odor, turbidity, which is the cloudiness of the water, pH, ammonia, which tells you if there's any kind of septic or sewage intrusion, nitrate-nitrite, which can be attributed to the same thing and also to high use of fertilizers, alkalinity, hardness, which we're going to talk about in a couple minutes, chloride, sodium, and two naturally occurring minerals in the iron and manganese. And we also felt that the nature of the complaints that we saw from the town were covered by the sanitary chemicals. So we felt very comfortable that if we sampled for sanitary chemicals, it would give us a very good representation and idea of the general water quality throughout the distribution The other parameter that was tested for was sulfate. And if you have elevated sulfate in your drinking water, that could cause the water to have a very bitter taste, so it was good to sample for that. Also, at each sampling location, we also measured what's called a free chlorine residual. Valley Water does chlorinate their water and when they present after I do, they could talk about that in more detail. But we wanted to see at each of these 32 sampling locations, did they have a chlorine residual present throughout their system? In general, the further out you go in a water distribution system, especially at den and water mains, it's fairly typical to find very low or non-existent chlorine residuals. But if you're chlorinating your sources of supply and you're finding a lot of non-detections of chlorine residuals throughout your system, that could be, that could be an indication that the water is stagnant and not moving through the system and that could also cause taste and odor complaints. Okay, so moving on to the test results and I hope everyone has a copy of the spreadsheet. If they don't, you can see Scott. Raise your hand and Scott will hand it out. Basically, what we did, and I just included a screen Basically, what we did, and I just, I just included a screenshot of it, I know it's hard to see, but I just wanted to make reference to it, but please follow along on the spreadsheet here, it's front and back. The front there, that's, has the date of April 6th, 2017, those were the samples that were collected by the local health department, and then on the other side are the samples that the state department of public health collected. Now if you notice on the spreadsheet, there are three columns that are highlighted in yellow, and those are the three areas that we're going to discuss here. But, as was mentioned in the beginning of the forum here, we also included Valley's water samples at the same time, just for comparison purposes. And as Robert had mentioned earlier, as you can see, for the most part, they're pretty much very similar to the results that we collected. As I get into my presentation, I'll keep referring to, you know, our samples, or thirty-two samples. I'm only gonna be talking about the samples that we collected through the state health department, and Shane through our local health. I'm only putting Valley's water results there just for reference. When they come up here and speak, they could talk about those more if they want to. And then, at the top, you'll see all of the constituents that we're sampled for, and in parentheses underneath, you'll see various levels. And I just wanted to go over what some of the levels are. So first and foremost, and they're all footnoted at the bottom, first and foremost, what we have are what's called maximum contaminant levels. So these are health-based, federal and or state standards, which are enforceable. There's also called, there are other ones that are called secondary maximum contaminant levels. These are non-enforceable, these are primarily aesthetic-type standards. We also have state standards for pH, color, turbidity, and odor. And before I get into the three highlighted areas, what I want to point out on all the results, all of the thirty-two results that we collected jointly with local health, all of the results were below the established maximum contaminant level, secondary maximum contaminant levels, and our state standards for physical parameters. So for what we sampled for, the water was in compliance with state and federal regulations. But I do want to move on to the three columns that are in yellow, because we want to talk about those. Brian, can you go down to the sodium slide? Next one. So I'm gonna skip harness just for a second, and just talk about sodium. You'll see on the sample result spreadsheet here, that the sodium results that we collected, what we have is what's called a notification level, and this is a regulatory requirement that the water that's leaving the sources, what we call the point of entry going into the distribution system, if the sodium level is above twenty-eight, by regulation, the water system has to notify their customers on an annual basis, for as long as those samples exceed that notification level of twenty-eight milligrams per liter. Valley Water did comply with this requirement in their 2016 consumer confidence report. I'm not sure if you guys have made that notification this year, or in the process of making that notification for calendar year 2017, but you can talk about it when you get up and talk. And then Brian's gonna mention something briefly later on sodium. But I just wanted to, just to briefly include this slide and mention it, only because if you're looking at this, you will see that the sample results were above twenty-eight. And I just wanted to explain what that means. I mentioned earlier that we, that when we pull the samples, we fill the, we let the spigot run for four minutes, we fill both of the sample bottles up, and then at the end, we collect what's called a free chlorine residual. Eight of the thirty-two sampling locations did not have a detectable free chlorine residual, and a ninth location had a barely detectable chlorine residual of zero-point-zero-two. Now, the sampling that I was involved in, there were two locations that, one of, two residential locations, one was, basically had a non-detection, there was no chlorine residual in that sample that we collected, and another location basically had a trace. Both of those locations were at dead ends. So that's, that's why we, you know, I just wanted to point that out, that, and then Shane, I don't know later if you want to talk about the, when Shane and his staff did the sampling, you had quite a bit of more throughout the center of town that didn't have any chlorine residuals. Based on the other residuals that we saw throughout the system, they are fairly typical of what you would find in a water distribution system the size of Valley Water. So there did not appear to be anything unusual about those, and I just want to point out that there is no regulatory requirement for Valley Water to maintain or have a chlorine residual throughout their system. So moving on to hardness, which is, which is really, I think, the kinda take-home message for what we saw through the sample results. So, just very briefly, hardness is primarily attributed to naturally occurring calcium and magnesium minerals. I'm not gonna go over all of the ranges there, but the take-home message is, is that a hardness greater than a hundred-and-eighty is what would be classified as very hard water. And all thirty-two sample results that we collected, all of those samples had a hardness that was above a hundred-and-eighty. The lowest result was a hundred-and-ninety, and the highest was three-hundred-and-twenty-two. So, just on, based on these thirty-two samples, we could say that this water would be classified as very hard. And I just want to point out too, it's not in the slide, but hardness is not unique just in a town of Plainville. Hardness can be found everywhere across the state, across the country. I think there was some study I was looking at this morning that said, you know, eighty percent of sources in this country have some form of hardness in it. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's not just unique to Plainville. But here in Plainville, based on the thirty-two samples that we collected, the water would be classified as being very hard. And before I turn it over to Brian to talk about the health effects, I just wanted to talk very briefly about some of the aesthetic effects of very hard water. And, you know, based on the complaints that we saw, you know, there is a very strong correlation. So hard water produces scale formation inside piping and fixtures, and may explain some of the complaints that we saw, that where people actually had white gunk or particulates that were in their faucet aerators. Hot water increases scale formation of hard water, so that's why some of your hot water appliances tend to wear out first. Very hard water can affect appliances such as dishwashers, laundry machines, coffee makers, and can cause those appliances to prematurely wear out. You may also find white residue inside your appliances, and on surfaces such as shower walls, dishes, and glassware. Water that's very hard, it's very difficult to create a soap lather, so it may be very difficult to, 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 you know, wash your hair. Sometimes people complain that you can have a film on your skin after. And in some cases, it may cause a metallic taste and or odor, so that could lead to some of the taste and odor complaints that were received. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brian, who's going to talk about health effects.
So the logical question is, what does this mean in terms of health? You have elevated levels of hardness and elevated levels of sodium. And the base, the bottom line answer for both at these levels is, we would not expect to see any health effects. So I'll talk about sodium first, probably people are more familiar with sodium. We all get sodium in our diet, we've all been told to decrease our sodium, that it might increase blood pressure, but at these types of levels, that is not really a concern. The level of twenty-eight that is in the regulations, the statutes for the state of Connecticut, is actually sort of an historic number that probably go away sometime. EPA used to have a notification number of twenty, they have vacated that number, and EPA does not have a number for sodium. I'm not sure why Connecticut's number was twenty-eight versus twenty, that goes back into ancient history. But EPA, reviewing the science over the past ten years, has concluded that sodium in water at levels that are normally found are not an issue for high blood pressure, cardiovascular disease, until maybe you got very, very high, up into the hundreds, and maybe even higher than that. We all take in probably a thousand to fifteen-hundred milligrams of sodium every day in a typical diet, and that would not include a bag of pretzels. So something like twenty-eight milligrams per liter, that's almost the same, so that if you drank a liter of water a day, you'd be getting twenty-eight milligrams. Most people get a thousand to fifteen-hundred. For those people on salt-restricted diets, and there are fewer of those, and maybe Dr. Pettit can comment on this, but the consensus in terms of people even with severe heart disease or blood pressure, there's less and less focus on reducing salt to very low levels. In fact, it may be that somewhere around five-hundred milligrams a day is a bare minimum for most people. Below that, you're getting too little sodium. So, we recently, for private wells, established a guidance level of one-hundred parts per million. That's out of an abundance of caution, and what all that says is that if you're above a hundred, you should let your doctor know. And you and your doctor should have a discussion, depending on your state of health, whether or not a hundred parts per million, or a hundred milligrams a day, or two-hundred milligrams a day if you're drinking two liters of water a day, is that something you should be concerned about? For most people, that's not the case. So even though the levels are higher than this level of twenty-eight, that level is an old number, and probably will be vacated in the near future, and they're all below the level of a hundred, and the level of a hundred is probably overly protective to begin with. So that's sodium. Hardness is actually a little bit easier, and I didn't, you know, to be honest with you, I didn't know a lot about hardness before this situation, because we'd never been asked, because basically it's considered benign in most situations. And if you go to the EPA website, or the CDC website, or any of those places, there's generally not a discussion about health effects of hardness, or this is a simple statement that there are no health effects for hardness. And so, the one place I found, there is a World Health Organization document from 2008 that's fairly extensive, and they basically, the World Health Organization's concluded that there are no known adverse health effects from hard water. And I did look through the literature, and what is interesting to find, and I almost never find this in researching contaminants in water, and I almost hesitate to call this a contaminant, it's more like a constituent, is that in general, it's a lot that hard water is beneficial to health. It's not proven, but there are a number of studies that show that areas with hard water, people do better in terms of cardiovascular disease, it may be helpful in terms of diabetes, and it, but those are still not definitive, but there are definitely no, no studies that indicate a strong negative association with a health effect. So, we already know, the main thing in hardness is calcium-magnesium. Calcium and magnesium are essential minerals in our diet, there are minimum amounts of calcium-magnesium that we need to take in. The minimum amount of magnesium is four-hundred milligrams a day, the highest level here was in the twenties. So again, even if you drank a liter or two a day, you're not even coming close to what you should be taking in. An average banana has twenty-five milligrams, so that's kind of equivalent to what you'd be getting from this water. Calcium, the recommended daily amount is closer to eight-hundred or a thousand milligrams a day, obviously we need it for bones. An eight-ounce glass of milk has three-hundred-and-fifty milligrams of calcium. The highest calcium level was somewhere around eighty or ninety, and so you're not even getting a glass of milk from the amount of calcium that's, that's present in this water. So, the base, the bottom line is that even though the water may taste funny, or may cause your soap not to work, it probably doesn't even add a very large percentage to what you're getting in your daily diet from all the other sources.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to bring up Valley Water representatives. Don, are you gonna start it off? And to explain the system in Plainville, and how it operates, and how they operate, and what their requirements are, and when Don gets done with that, we'll open it up to questions and comments. So we hope to get through this, and hopefully there'll be, you know, we'll provide as much time as necessary for people to either comment or ask questions, so, thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Hello, everybody. I appreciate you coming out tonight. I hope that what we have to say continues, the education in water in general, and that our presentation also helps you understand the water process. What I'd like to do is start off with a slide, and I want to give you a general overview of, you know, what we do at Valley Water, what we're about, and then, as our presentation continues, we hope to get a little bit more specific on some of the issues. But, as you probably have seen our building on Northwest Drive, these are our headquarters, and we occupy actually both floors. The first floor is dedicated to Valley Water Systems, all its personnel are there, and we get everything done through perhaps about seven or eight employees located in our first floor. The second floor is occupied by our holding company, New England Service Company, and New England Service Company has other subsidiary water utilities, two of which are actually, two of which are actually located in New Hampshire, and three in Massachusetts. So we have personnel devoted to those operations, and we have engineering staff, we have accounting staff, in order to support our Valley Water Systems operation. Next slide, please. I would like to run through just a few facts and figures. Again, this is kinda designed to give you a little bit of a background on, you know, who we are, what we are, what we do. We started way back in 1884, when Plainville Water Company was established, and that's particularly the era when the industrial revolution started, and a lot of water utilities came into existence. In Plainville, we have roughly sixty-eight-hundred customers or so located in, also located in Suddington and Farmington. We serve a population of eighteen-thousand people, give or take a few. We have two water supply wellfields with multiple high-producing and significantly productive wells. Continuing, we have eighty miles of water mains, and about six-hundred hydrants which support the public fire protection in town, and in Suddington and in Farmington also. Two water storage tanks, and I'll show those later on in the presentation, having a capacity of about a million gallons each. We're regulated by the Connecticut Public Utility Authority, who you've heard previously, as well as the Department of Public Health, which you have also heard. In addition, we're regulated by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And so, we have masters, essentially, that overview our actions on a daily basis, and on a continuing operation. The above regulatory authorities, meaning PURA, DPH, and DEEP, as it's known, do, among other things, they approve the rates that we charge, they tell us, you know, what we can charge in a format of operating costs and investment costs. We also have DPH, which monitors water quality on a routine basis. We're in touch with them, we have licensed operators who sample, and as you heard earlier, we split samples during the whole sampling process, and we are very familiar with that process, with the sampling operation. In addition, we have DEEP, and their function primarily is the withdrawal of water supplies at both wellfields. In other words, we are permitted to withdraw certain amounts of water from our Woodford Ave wellfield, as well as our Johnson Ave wellfield. Next slide, please. Just to give you a little overview of how we are put together at Valley Water, we have Just to give you a little overview of how we are put together at Valley Water, we have the folks that you see. Nearly every one of those people that are in those slots there are located on our first floor at Northwest Drive. We have workloads that come across, you know, in the normal course of operating a water utility. And we have the ability to supplement those folks with some of the folks at the holding company level who are on the second floor. In other words, as you can see, we have three field people down there in the bottom left, the operations supervisor and utility techs. So according to seasonal demands, construction demands, we have the ability to supplement those people. So that is one of the benefits of having just a little bit larger operation. We have a board of directors. We have field and office people who are all licensed. We have accountants, engineers, all part of the total organization. Next slide, please. This is a system map for Valley Water Systems. You saw that before. It shows a location of the two wellfields we have, the Johnson Ave Well Field and the Woodford Ave Well Field. And we, in addition to serving Plainville, we have some customers that are located in Suddington as well as Farmington. We have approximately 6,800 customers, which I think we've mentioned. We have the wellfields, as I mentioned, very productive wellfields. We're permitted to withdraw at the Woodford Ave Well Field approximately 2.17 million gallons a day, as well as at the Johnson Ave Well Field, we can produce up to a million and a half gallons per day. And these are numbers that are regulated by DEEP. Next slide, please. This slide shows our Maria Road Tank and Pump Station, 1,000, rather, 1 million gallons of water storage capacity. This functions as a provision for public fire protection. It also balances peak demands that may occur during very extreme hot weather droughts. So this is a tank that's virtually filled right at the top on a daily basis. The building to the lower left is the Maria Road Pump Station, red roof. This provides water to the upper reaches of Ledge Road and View Street. Next slide, please. Again, we have a counterpart to the Maria Road Tank, and this is the one at Reliance Road. Down in the lower left, we have the Reliance Road Pump Station, which serves the Metacoma and the Pinnacle Road area. The Reliance Road Tank, again, is a, has a million gallon storage capacity. It supplements the Maria Road Tank. And this all goes together with providing very, very significant amounts of public fire protection. And I will just mention that later on about the importance of that. Next slide, please. These buildings are located at Woodford Ave Well Field. The upper left building is one of the wells that's capable of producing about 450 gallons a minute or so. We have other wells, one of which produces somewhere between 900,000 and a million gallons of water per minute, a, per day, actually. These are very important wells that we have at the Woodford Ave Well Field. The building in the lower right is a chemical treatment plant, and that is scheduled to be replaced by a building which we have under design right now. And that proposed building will essentially replace the function of the Woodford Ave Well Chemical Treatment Plant, which you see on the lower right. And I might mention that some of the additions that we make to raw water to produce finished water are chemicals like chlorine, as an example, fluoride and phosphate. So these are introduced to the water supply, the raw water supply to become finished water at both the Johnson Ave Treatment Plants, which we'll show you in a moment, as well as the Woodford Ave Plant. Next slide, please. The Johnson Ave Water Treatment Plant, which is right around the corner here, is a building that duplicates the function of the Woodford Ave Treatment Plant. This particular treatment plant, and it's both a treatment plant and a pump station in a slide which I'll demonstrate following this, essentially duplicates the Woodford Ave Treatment Plant. They perform the same function. In other words, they pump water into the system. They, the treatment plant functions as a process that introduces the chemical additions that I had mentioned earlier, namely chlorine, fluoride and phosphate. Next slide, please. The interior of the Johnson Ave Treatment Plant, what we have here are two high lift pumps on the left, and these can alternate depending on the usage in any given day. In other words, they perform what they would call a lead-lag function. When one pump stops, then the other one will take over when there's a demand there. Both this station as well as the Woodford Ave Plant Station can respond to both storage tanks. That would be the Johnson, rather, the Reliance Road Storage Tank, 1 million gallons, as well as the Maria Ave Tank, 1 million gallons. So that either one supplements the water level in both those storage tanks and provide the evenness, evenness, a consistency of pressure, as well as providing all the fire protection that we have in town. Next slide, please. This is a typical water main installation that's occurring in town. We wanted to show you this to let you know that this water main construction and projects like it are capital additions to the water system, which go on every year. Water is a very capital-intensive industry, a lot of cost that's associated with improvements. Anytime you excavate ground, you have to deal with traffic, pavement restoration, any number of things. This becomes very costly. But it's also important to replace aged water mains. Some of the water mains that have been in town have dated back to probably the 1920s. There was a time when I came on the scene here at the town back in the 90s where we were dealing with a stovepipe issue. And I think that some of our regulators can recollect that. It was, they were very troublesome. It was not uncommon to have a water break almost daily, and in some cases, twice a day, three times a day. So through investment, we have improved the water system, we've improved the integrity of the system, and we've, it has had its benefits. We probably spent somewhere between $750,000 and $1 million a year just in capital improvements. That's an ongoing expenditure. It's a commitment that you have to make to make sure that the system is reliable and dependable. And as a result, what we have is almost virtually no water main breaks, which is almost unheard of these days. You've read and you've seen on TV disastrous water main breaks. We have probably had two water main breaks this past year, which is just phenomenal. But that comes from investment. And it also reinforces and provides dependability and reliability to the water system. Those are all good things. Furthermore, by virtue of investment, and it's not only in water mains, we do things for treatment. We provide and we invest in electronic instruments for testing and for motor control and so forth. But through this investment, we have really vastly reduced our water loss ratios. As a matter of fact, if you went to our website, you'll be able to see a category that's, a category or a metric, I would call it, of the water system performance, which is called non-revenue water. And this is a term that, you know, our regulators are familiar with. Our water loss is very small. It's about a 5% loss, which I think is a great number. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that not only is a result of the water main investment, that has helped improve the community, the town's ISO rating. What is the ISO rating? The ISO rating is the Insurance Service Office, which is basically a consultant to insurance underwriters. Insurance underwriters go to ISO and they ask, "How is Plainville?" And ISO gives them the results through testing that they have done on the system, and that influences insurance rates for the community. But I wanted to provide this information. You know, I probably haven't covered all the things that I wanted to mention tonight. I haven't mentioned all the tests that we do on a daily basis. We measure pH, we measure chlorine residuals, we measure iron, and we measure manganese. We report these. I get reports every morning and review these. Some of these reports go directly to DPH. It's a routine mandated basis. But there are many, many things involved in water, and I just grab this office. So I hope this helps a little bit. From here, I'd like to introduce Nick LaChance, who works with us, and he's going to get a little bit more specific on what we're doing. And then Nick is going to introduce Tom Hanson, who will kind of get even into more plans that we have. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your patience. Thanks.
First, I'd like to encourage everyone up here at the front to pick up two handouts that we provided. The first of which is our annual consumer confidence report that Tom had mentioned earlier in his presentation. This report is sent out to each one of our customers in the month of June, so you should be receiving a 2017 report coming up here, but these are the ones that we provided to you last year. Secondly, we put together what we feel is a valuable handout that gives takeaways that we feel are important to each and every one of us that are here. These, this handout and the bullet points are going to reference the daily and monthly testing we perform as required by the Department of Health. It's also going to discuss customer service improvements that are going to be started here on the next slide. It's going to discuss preventive maintenance and some of the preventive maintenance measures that we take on a daily basis, on a monthly basis, on an annual basis with our system. And lastly, there's going to be an independent lab report, which we use Tungstus Labs, really to discuss the non-corrosive makeup of the water that is here in town. So the last few months have provided insight to areas of opportunity for our business that we can improve upon. Just like any other company in today's era, we understand and we know that there are always opportunities that we can improve upon, and it needs to be ingrained in the culture of that company to succeed, to look for those opportunities. As the management, as the management team and as the board of directors of Valley Water, it's our task to ensure that that culture is ingrained in each and every one of our, each and every one of our employees and that they're continuously looking for those opportunities. The bolded points on this slide have all been implemented as a result of direct feedback that we've received over the last few months, as well as through brainstorming sessions that we've held internally that we know are, again, areas of concern for our customers and areas of concern that, you know, we really want to tackle firsthand. So the first bullet point here is new water quality job order system. This bullet point deserves its own slide, which is going to come next after the current slide that we're on. So I'm going to touch on that one in a second. The following four bullet points all revolve around what we characterize as customer service and what we would characterize as how we are going to receive complaints and how we are going to react to complaints. So this bullet point number two, in my mind, is for us to take a proactive approach to customer service through quarterly customer service training. So this has been implemented, just like everything else in this slide, going forward over the last few months. So the quarterly customer service training is, it's a training in which we actually have our frontline partners. So we have some of our customer service reps that feel very, feel conviction toward a specific part of customer service, and they lead that particular training, as well as some parts of the management staff coming in and then leading on another part of training that we feel is important. The topics that we use for this training is directly taken from customer service surveys that we receive from our, from our customers. So I point this out because I want to make sure that as we are discussing these changes that have happened and have been implemented over the last few months, the feedback that we receive from our customers is heard. We're using it. I'm using it. Don's using it. To put it toward using it as a tool to train and to improve ourselves on. Next is a daily customer service survey performed via telephone. So this, this survey is being performed by our office manager each day. The opportunities that we have to perform this survey is going to be based off of the in-home work that we performed at our customers. So for instance, if we have a field tech that's coming out to replace one of your meters, which is a pretty routine maintenance that we handle daily, we are going to contact the particular customer, ask them what their experience was when they spoke with our customer service rep in the office. Did you have a good experience with that customer service rep? But they're going to ask you about how your experience was with the field technician, and then overall what your feelings are regarding the service that you're receiving from Valley Water. The fourth one is customer service surveys are now available online. It was important to us, as we were going through this process over the last few months, to understand that not necessarily every particular customer is going to want to be identified. Not necessarily everybody wants to have a name associated with a particular concern or issue or complaint that they might have. So the online customer service survey was our opportunity to give everybody a voice in an anonymous way that they can still give us that information, and then we can look at it as a management team and utilize it in trainings going forward. So what I've just described is, it's a lot of information, it's a lot of data that we're trying to pull. So what are we doing with this data? This last bullet point speaks to that, in which finally, with the feedback, we've implemented what you can characterize as a customer satisfaction index. So it's basically a scorecard that we can put together, and we can identify the areas that we're doing really well in, and the areas that we have opportunity in. Each month, we can look at that month over month to ensure that A, either we're improving, or if there's a decline, then we need to address that through training, we need to address that through on-the-job training between supervisor and customer service rep. Or if it's out in the field, then that's, again, another opportunity for on-the-job training between the operations supervisor and the particular field tech. So to sum this up, I guess I just want to make sure and hopefully convey that the feedback that we receive, again, is being used, and I'm soliciting that we receive, again, is being used, and I'm soliciting that feedback so that we can improve upon what we're currently doing. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before on the previous slide, there's this new customer service protocol that we want to use when it comes to water quality concerns. So this slide illustrates what that is, and it's essentially, again, it's our new water quality and service concern process that has been implemented over the last few months. So the reason for this particular protocol that we are implementing is so that we can ensure, there's a systematic approach to ensure each customer's concern is understood at the point of us coming out and visiting with each customer, but then it's also addressed and it's followed up on. As we can all say here today, there is no point in listening if we're not going to do anything about it. So we need to make sure that we are addressing the concern either at the point of the meeting at the customer's house or internally so that we can rectify. First off, we've created essentially a new, a new job code, if you will. So that call is logged into the system specifically as a water quality concern. So what that means to us, or what that means internally is, if we're logging as a water quality concern, it's going to stand out amongst if there's a collections call or if there's a call for a real estate transfer, just to name a couple of calls that we normally receive each day. So once that call's been flagged as a water quality concern, the customer service rep is then tasked with asking and making sure, if possible, that we can set an in-home appointment with a field tech. So that in-home appointment is essential for us to go to diagnose and also just to understand and make sure that we can clarify what the particular concern is, that we can understand what that concern is and then address it. A job order is created and tracked in our system to ensure completion from time of complaint to end resolution. So with this piece, we're trying to create accountability that we can track that particular concern from start to end. At the point of the particular in-home meeting, in appointment, the field tech will discuss concerns specifically that the customer has and will perform the following tests. So we're going to look at pH levels, so we're actually going to pull a physical sample out of your sink, out of your kitchen faucet. We're going to take a look at the pH level. We are going to test for chlorine residual. If applicable, we're going to look at the water pressure. We'll do a color and clarity, so a visual test, as well as taste and odor. So again, these are kind of physical parameters that we're looking at. And again, the idea with this is that it's onsite testing to provide immediate feedback, so we're able to have that immediate conversation with the customer and/or look for immediate action for resolution. So we understand that, yes, there is something going on here, we do need to take a look at it, whether there's any number of events that could happen at that point. The field tech is to report their findings to and discuss recommendations, again, directly with the customer at that point. Moving along, job order is filled in with information gathered and findings are noted on the customer files. So this is important to create what we want to call a book for each customer. So if there is continuous ongoing concerns, and either we are finding issues when we go out, or if we're not finding issues going out, at least we have that history to be able to fall back on and to be able to look at and understand. Lastly, to close out the entire system, the president, Don, or the operations supervisor will verify information is sufficient to close the job order, and if it's not, they will require additional information or additional steps from that field tech to ensure that the resolution is complete. So I think at the end of this, what this really does is it provides accountability to the office staff, to our field staff, and to our supervisors for any quality concern and that has been addressed appropriately. Next slide. This is just a sample. I just want to, I just want to put this up there, just so that everybody can see a visual sample of what the actual customer service survey document looks like. This is, this is the exact sample that you'll find online on our website. Again, it's just ValleyWaterSystems.com. You can do this anonymously on the website. This is also the exact same survey that our office manager will ask you when she's coming out, or I'm sorry, when she's calling you over the telephone, if you just happen to have an appointment. And then lastly, this is also at the front desk, so if anybody's come into our office and has paid their water bill in person, this survey is right there at the front desk as well for you to be able to fill out. So that concludes my portion of the presentation, so I'd like to turn it over to Tom at this point.[923.00][923.00](APPLAUSE)
All right, I'm last, and I only have two slides. So, and we're going to go to a Q and A, of course, but maybe this will answer some questions beforehand. What are we going to do next? Well, I'm an engineer, I don't actually, I'm not employed by Valley Water Systems, but I'm hired by them to do some engineering work and some analysis. And Don's marching orders to me where we're going to look at any and all alternatives to address hardness. And as we've already heard, hardness is a characteristic of our water. We characterize it as very hard here in Plainville, and we understand the aesthetic concerns, and that's why we're all here, because we know it's of concern to our customers. So we're going to evaluate any and all techniques. Those techniques might be structural, a treatment plant, it might be blending alternatives to reduce hardness, and other technologies or ideas that come across to address that concern specifically. The engineering analysis is to look at flows, look at hardness coming from the wells, compare the water quality at the wells, look at how it's distributed in the system, and develop alternatives to lower that overall hardness level from very hard to something more acceptable. Water chemistry is essential. We need to know what the impact will be of changing the water quality at the wellhead when we distribute into the system. Look, of course, for any ancillary concerns or problems that might come up that we didn't anticipate. You can't just willy-nilly go changing water chemistry without understanding how that might affect other parameters in the system, and that's our job. The effectiveness of the treatment, obviously the idea is to lower hardness, but by how much? The hardness is, is there, it's very hard. How effective are the different treatment techniques or the blending techniques? How effective are they at getting the hardness down to a level that causes fewer aesthetic problems to the customers? And that's clearly an element of the analysis. The technical feasibility, you know, there are limitations. The Johnson Avenue site doesn't have a lot of room. Woodford Avenue does have a lot of room. We need sewer access for some of these alternatives because they generate a waste product. There may be electrical load concerns, et cetera, et cetera. So the technical feasibility of each of these alternatives, we'll have to take all that into consideration. And regulatory approvals. We do everything in partnership with the DPH and PURA. We will be working with them, say, is this an approvable technology? Can we go forward with this particular process? What concerns do you have? And what are the benefits? And make a trade-off or comparison there between the regulatory concerns and the benefits to our customers. And obviously, we have to determine what the rate impacts would be. I mean, this, this is going to cost money, maybe a certain amount of money, maybe a lot more money, depending on what the engineering analysis shows is the best overall solution. So there's capital costs incurred for building a treatment plant, and there are operating costs associated with operating the plant and disposing of residuals and that type of thing. All of this comes together in an engineering analysis that will hopefully come up with the best, most effective, suitable alternative for reducing hardness in the Valley Water system. And this is, kind of goes right along with the customer service initiatives that Nick and Don have developed. They want the customers, the Valley Water customers, to be part of that decision-making process. So at the end of the engineering analysis, and we developed several alternatives, and we can quantify how the hardness will be reduced under each of those alternatives, and we can quantify the rate impact, we're going to send that information to the customers in the form of a survey or questionnaire or some kind of a feedback mechanism to say, yes, we're willing to see these rates change for that level of improvement in water quality as it refers to hardness. So this is going to take some time, but we, we're anticipating in a six-month timeframe that this will all be laid out in a very understandable, straightforward format for all of Valley Water customers to come back and say, okay, this looks like an alternative we'd like to move forward with. Because remember, this is not so much regulatory-driven, the hardness is, as it is a customer service-driven problem. And we understand the problem, and the reason we're here is because we don't like these aesthetic issues that come from hardness. But understanding now a little bit more about the health effects or the lack of health issues associated with it might help you to help us make that decision. And as always, Valley Water will be sharing this information in mailings and other outreach programs associated with the new customer service program. And I just have one more slide. Okay, so here's kind of a picture of what Tom was talking about when we did our sampling. So as an engineer, I like this stuff. I realize the traffic light is upside down, I'm going to explain that in a second, but what I did was I said, well, okay, here's our results, let's see what it looks like on the map. And this is kind of the very first step of an engineering analysis. So the green dots are, first of all, all the water is very hard. There's no getting away from it. But hard is kind of a relative thing when you look at a water system. So the green spots were places we tested under 200 parts per million in the system. The orange was 200 to 250, and then the red was over, over 250 parts per million. And I've put these on this map, and you can also see the two blue diamonds, those are where our supplies are. As Don showed earlier, Johnson Avenue up there toward the top and Woodford down toward the middle of the system. And right away, we can see something which maybe was intuitive at first glance, but now you can actually see it in, in black and white or in red and green, if you want. But most of our hardness, our highest levels of hardness issues are close to the Woodford Field. So, you know, we begin to think about, okay, is there something we do at Woodford that will have a beneficial impact throughout the system when we blend it with Johnson? Or, you know, what can we do blending the two systems as they are now together to kind of ameliorate those high, those higher hardness level areas and get them down to a more moderately high, or it's pretty high everywhere? So we're not just running off and saying we're going to build a treatment plant. First, we want to understand the problem and see if there are alternatives that we can apply operationally to improve the situation, which we can do in relatively short order. And if a treatment plan is on, is in the future, that's when we will come back with that survey to tell you, you know, this is what it costs and this is the benefit for it. So like I say, I'm finished, two slides, to and done. I think I'll turn it back to, do you want to take it, Don, or Mr. Lee?
I'll take it.
Okay. So thank you for your attention.[1475.74][1475.74](APPLAUSE)
First off, I want to thank you for your patience, for, you know, listening to this presentation. I think we all felt from the people who've been discussing this for the last couple of months that it was important that we're all on the same page as far as how things operate, what the requirements are, and what, you know, how, how this, this system operates. And that once we all have that base information, then I think we can have a more intelligent discussion about where do we go from here. I hope you could also see that, you know, a lot of work has been done as a result of feedback that we've received over the last couple of months. With that in mind, we're now going to turn it over to you, and the way I'd like to do that is Scott has a, has a microphone, or will get a microphone that is remote. If you have a question, Will will bring the microphone to you, so you don't have to come up front if you don't want to. And you can either ask your question or make your comment. If you have a question, we'll try to find, you know, the appropriate person to, you know, to help answer that question. So hopefully you still have some questions. I'd be surprised if we answered them all as part of the process, but this is your opportunity to, to ask questions and make comments. So Scott, there's a gentleman over here.
Thank you. Dan Butler, Pickney Avenue in Plainville. The map that's up on the screen now confirms what I've heard anecdotally, and that is people who live near the northern part of town and get their water from the Johnson Avenue pump station or from the Johnson Avenue well do not experience the same problems or the problems that the people who live in a lower section of town experience. I have relatives who live up in that section. They don't have problems with their plumbing, with their water, with the showerheads. So my question is, at this point, is there a difference in the way the water is being distributed from the Johnson Avenue site versus the Woodford Avenue site that is making the difference?
Don, do you have somebody to answer that question?
Yeah, I can answer that if I may.
Come on up front, Don. And just, so you know, all the slides that you saw this evening are going to be posted online. They'll be online tomorrow, so you can, you can get them. If you don't have access to the internet, you just contact my office, call my office, we'll mail them to you. So, you know, we didn't make enough, you know, we didn't know how many copies to make, but they'll be online if you have any questions or you want your own copy, we'll send them to you as well. So, Don, you want to come up?
The question came from Dan, Dan. Good question, I appreciate it. The question, as I understood it, was are we getting more hardness as a result of those customers? Are those customers closer to the Woodford Ave supply experiencing more difficulty than, say, the Johnson Ave well field? Is that?
That's another question. Question is, is there a difference?
Is there a difference in the way the water is being distributed from the Johnson Avenue site than the Woodford Avenue site that is causing the difference that we can visibly see on the map? In other words, are there filters in place at the Johnson Avenue? Is there something that's being done now that can be done at the Woodford Avenue site?
Thank you for the clarification. What is happening is that the Johnson Ave site has less hardness than the Woodford Ave site, first of all. And those customers who are closer to the Woodford Ave site, as the map portrays, are experiencing more hardness. So specifically, there is no difference in the way the either treatment plant is distributing the water. It's just a matter of the harder water coming from Woodford Ave as opposed to that coming from Johnson Ave. Now, as Tom alluded to, we can, there are some certain distribution improvements or, shall I say, configurations that we may be able to implement that can more uniformly distribute the water from both supplies. But the answer is, is really no difference. The water is treated in the same fashion at either well field. It's just a question of harder water coming from the Woodford Ave well field. Is that responsive to your question?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else have a question apparently? Anybody else have a question apparently? Scott spotted somebody over here, and then we'll get you, sir.
Hi, Joshua Payne, Park Street. On the sheet that we were given earlier, it says that the local and state department of health both have a .04 for iron and magnes, and over on the ammonia, it's a .05, while the Valley Water samples have a different number throughout. Is there like a explanation for that?
Laura, is that somebody from the Department of Public Health? Want to take that? I think it'd be better if they answered that question.
I agree.
So I think your question has to do with detection limits. It says less than on most of those, and the two labs basically just have slightly different detection limits. So they use Tungstis that has a different detection limit than our state lab in Rocky Does that answer your question? Okay.
Scott, there's a gentleman down here with his hand raised.
I live in the Woodford Avenue area. I know that they've replaced the water mains in the Woodford Avenue area. What about the side streets that some of us live on? Why haven't those been replaced?
I've heard your question, so thank you. As you know, we've, who asked the question, please? As you know, we had a slide showing the construction taking place at a roadway in Plainville. We are currently doing a job on Trumbull Ave. I think we're replacing about 5,000 feet of aged piping. It's all cast iron pipe with funny joints, and we've had, you know, it's been problematic. We're doing that also in anticipation of the paving program that the town has, which may occur this year and may also occur next year, but we want to be in and out of that Trumbull Ave. This all comes down to capital, funds. I appreciate your question. I love it. I'd like to replace everything in the distribution system, but we just do not have the funds. And we have to be careful how we construct and allocate capital, so to speak, because we want to moderate our construction program with rates. We haven't had a rate increase since 2010, and I'm very happy about that. I'm sure everybody else is. But it's a balancing act with capital. That's the long answer. The short answer is, it's just a question of money.
Just one more question. I have called in the past, had Valley Water come out to my house, and I was scolded because I put a whole house water filtration system after my appliances and everything were destroyed. And since then, it's gotten even worse. So I'm definitely going to be going through your customer program to see what we can do, because it's not that I can't drink my water, it's that every two months, my filter is so clogged that I can't even, it won't, the water won't run. I have to change the filter. And when I brought you folks out before, somebody came out, they looked things over, they said everything is fine, and they walked away. And so for years now, I've been using my own money to replace filters every two months, and it's becoming ridiculous. All I can say is, I'm thrilled that Plainville Water is great. I just hope someday mine can get great.
I just want to respond to the first part of your question. Did I hear you say you were scolded?
Yes.
That bothers me. This is the first I have heard. Have you called a company recently relative to your problem?
No, we're waiting for all of this to take place so that I can move forward.
Okay. Your point's well taken. You know, we're dealing with hard water. We've had hard water since 1884. Nothing's changed. Area groundwater supplies are virtually hard also. That's still not a reason for us to ignore the problem. As Tom pointed out, we are going to look at all the alternatives, and we're going to explore and see what these costs are to implement what we think is the most effective solution. The issue, as you point out, is one of hardness. And the consequences and the symptoms of that hardness show up in particulate matter. It can occur in water heaters, it can occur in air raiders. And some of the things that can be done are that air raiders can be removed and cleaned. That's an easy fix. Water heaters, on the other hand, they can be drained, and they probably should be drained at least annually and preferably semi-annually. That's going to extend the life of the water heater. Filters in Plainville are designed to soften the water, and there are filters in Plainville. Matter of fact, our office manager has a softener. And it's symptomatic of hard water, which is extensive throughout the system. I don't want to name other utilities, but, and it's, hardness is a problem. And I think overall, I think this whole issue that has come about is, relates directly to hardness. We're concerned about it. We want to do something about it to the extent that our customers will allow us. But your point is not forgotten. We're not ignoring it. I would appreciate it if you could give us a call and meet personally so that your complaints are registered and we can kind of gather data and be more effective in what the future holds for improvements.
Carol Nicolucci, I live on Condeale Lane, so I'm in the Woodford area. I have two questions, please. I appreciate your honesty and openness, but could you please list, maybe on your website, some resources to help us with the hard water? Ways to soften it, ways to drain a water heater? I mean, some real help on your website? What filters we might use for those of us who don't know anything about it? And my second question is, has there ever been anyone looking at the Tomaso site? They're literally moving a mountain over there, blasting and grinding and, I mean, and we look at the difference on the two, on the chart there. Does Tomaso have an effect on the hardness of our water in this part of the town?
First off, it's Tilcon.
Tilcon.
We want to make sure we get that right.
In my Italian Father's Day, it was Tomaso.
It was at one time.
The first question is a great question because we were discussing that very same thing. As a matter of fact, today, I think Nick was discussing it, and one of our office people, our customer service people, said, let us put something on the website, preventative measures that can be taken to mitigate the effects of hardness, i.e. draining water, hot water tanks, dishwashers, you know, air raiders and so forth.
What is symptomatic in our appliances? What shows up when our appliance is being affected by hard water? I mean, in simplistic terms that we can understand. I was a teacher for 38 years, and you need to reach a lot of learning styles, so make it as simple as possible.
I think it was explained earlier that scaling results, that's the symptom of hard water. It comes from, it's, it comes from calcium carbonate, which is a mineral in groundwater supplies as well as magnesium. There are others that are much more expert on this than I am. I plead some ignorance on this, but from what I understand, well, Nick is going to take over here.
I guess I just want to clarify. I just want to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly. You're looking to ensure that, basically, you can catch it before it's too late?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
And how do I, what do I look for?
Sure. Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, that's something that, that's something that we can put that together.
In simplistic terms.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know about the white.
Yep. I can compile something and put that onto the website for you.
Great.
I think there's a second part to that question, too.
The question about Tilcon, moving the mountain, and does that have an effect on the well?
We believe it has no effect on the water. You know, Woodford Ave wells are extremely deep, and I don't believe there's any impact on, the water quality has not changed as Tilcon has, you know, gone through its operations over the years. I hope that answers your question.
We're just going to get some other people first, but we'll get to you.
Hi, I'm Julia Lindquist. I live actually right behind us in Samuel's Crossing, and I'm a brand-new resident to Plainville. I grew up just a few blocks away in Bristol with absolutely wonderful water. I left for about 20 years, lived across the country, never had an issue with water. I came back to build my dream home, beautiful, very expensive home in Samuel's Crossing, and I move in and discover I have this miserably hard water. Luckily enough, I knew at the beginning, and so I installed the softener immediately before I had any issues. Unfortunately, now this $1,000 softener makes my water so soft, I can't get the soap off. So while that's a feeling and you're truly not still soapy, I don't know if any of you had to deal with that, but it's miserable. I also pretty much exclusively only drink water. I try to be really healthy and hydrate, and I work from home, so I drink water all day every day, and it's miserable. So for me, moving to Plainville has been horrible and miserable, and I can't believe two blocks away for 30-something years that I never had this issue. So the bottom line that I'm leaving this meeting with, the messaging is, you're going to try to work on it, which is wonderful. You've been very transparent, which is wonderful. I can appreciate the effort and the thoughtfulness that has gone into this meeting in terms of the information you've provided. But what I'm really hearing and the message I'm leaving with is, you're going to work on this, but to the effect that your customers will allow you to, meaning you're going to pass the cost on to us. I'm already paying the cost, like the gentleman here mentioned, and it's really not helping me. The softer water is actually worse almost. So I feel like there's really no resolution, and I feel a little bit lost and frustrated and a little patronized by the continual effect of, it's really healthy, there are no, you know, negative effects. Well, really, it's my quality of life and a single woman just starting off my life in my dream home, and it's really sad. So it's frustrating to hear that even if you come up with a resolution, you're only going to pass the cost on to me. I don't know what to really do with that. So again, I appreciate the thoughtfulness in all of this, but at the end of the day, I shouldn't have to pay even more than I've already been paying for a basic human need when around the corner, my whole life, it was, you know, taken for granted. So more of a comment than anything else.
Scott, there was somebody, gentleman down here.
Yeah, my name is Bill Brown. I live on Trumbull Avenue, where we're all currently enjoying the water main replacement project. Regarding the distribution, where I know, I believe you said the Woodford Avenue wells can produce more on a daily basis than the Johnson Avenue. The areas that, well, like from where I am, Farmington Avenue area, am I getting my water from the Johnson Avenue wells? Or, and is that really the way it always is? I know there's a, you guys have a building on Trumbull Avenue, which I've always assumed was a pump station. But is generally speaking, you know, is the Woodford Avenue waters stay in the red area and the rest of the area gets Johnson Avenue, and they don't really mix unless something that? I assume if Johnson Avenue wells were out of commission or something, then I'd be getting Woodford Avenue water. That's my question.
Well, the question, I think one of them was, are you getting Johnson Ave water on Trumbull Ave?
Yeah.
And the answer is yes. And just to supplement that answer and to let you know how the system operates, we can't control the amount of water that comes from Johnson Ave into the system and regulate that, modulate it, as well as the water that comes out of Woodford Ave. As a matter of fact, we rely more on the Johnson Ave because it is less hard water. So you are getting Johnson Ave water that probably goes through the Reliance Road Tank and maybe directly into the distribution system. Even though the Woodford Ave is capable of producing more water, we rely on the Johnson Ave system.
I'd like to make a point as well. Who has the next question, just so Scott can move towards you? Before we get there, you heard earlier when you talked about one of the options would be blended. There are some interconnections between the Plainville, or the, you know, the Valley Water System and the New Britain Water System, which is primarily a reservoir system. And when we talk about blending, that's one of the things that the engineers are going to look at, is the possibility of maybe blending some waters together as far as that is concerned. So ma'am, with regards to your softener, have you gotten a hardness test on your water recently? Because it may be too, it may be too, you know, your water may be too soft, you know, and maybe it's overreacting to what's there, but I don't know. You may want to check that out. Scott? Were you done, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Gail, I think you had a question.
I just have a comment, well, a couple of comments. I lived in town in an apartment building for, the same one, for 20 years, and I haven't drunk the water. I spend $400 to $600 a year on water. I won't give my cats the water, and this program didn't make me feel better. I have osteoporosis, but I'm not going to drink the water to feel better. I just, I'm wondering, like this lady here, could some of the particulate from the digging, could that get into the water? And the other question is, have they considered another location? Oh, my third question, and that's, is how old are those buildings that are, you know, the pumps? How old are those?
Let me try to answer the last question first. Was your question, how old are the water mains?
Yeah. How old are the pumps, the treatment centers? How old are those?
The Johnson Ave Treatment Plant was constructed in 1992, so it's relatively new. Still current, state-of-the-art technology. Water mains between Johnson Ave and Woodford Ave relatively new, not every one of them. We recognize that some have to be replaced. But essentially, if I use the term ductile iron, that is probably the state-of-the-art pipe material that's used. The system basically is replete, if you will, with ductile iron. We've done that much replacement. Woodford Ave buildings are older. They looked older in the picture. We're going to replace the, you know...
About what year were they built?
Pardon me?
What year? What year?
I'm kind of guessing here. I think probably in the 1940s or 50s that building was constructed, and we recognize that. We demolished an ancillary building there. We have plans to replace the current building, which is used, is a treatment plant injecting, you know, the chlorine, the fluoride and the phosphate that we spoke of. But this is in progress. So to answer your question, we're doing as many things as we can and at the same time trying to balance and be, you know, come within, you know, the capital that we have to spend each year.
But have they considered looking for another location, which would be near the pipes? So it would be difficult, you know, just to build the, well, you know, just a new location?
I don't think that's...
For the Woodford, say, for the Woodford, since it is so old.
I don't think the location is going to have any impact on where we build the treatment plant. Is that what your question is?
Yeah, or where you're getting the water from, inside from the Woodford, you know, maybe a place further away.
Well, that would be part of the study.
Okay.
We'll evaluate it. We're going to evaluate all options, as Tom mentioned, and, you know, we're not resistant. We haven't got any preconceived notions here. We want a very objective engineering study.
Like, I'd like to put a filter in, but the pipes are so bad, I can't. And I don't like the idea of having a softener because I don't like adding chemicals to my water. So I want to stay, so I buy bottled water all the time. And I had to rinse my berries off tonight with that. I don't even like to wash the dishes with it, so anyhow, that's it. Okay.
One of the things that I've learned during this process is that as much as possible, the water company tries to loop their system so that the water keeps moving. And what they find is, is the more that water moves, the more, better chance that you're going to have better quality. And if you're on a dead-end street or in an area that doesn't use that much water on a regular basis, then that, those are the ones that also tend to have, you know, worse problems. Yes, sir?
My question is for you, Mr. Lee. You mentioned the blending of the water with the New Britain Water System. I'm eagerly awaiting the outcome of this study. I expect we're going to see sticker shock. And my question to you is, is the town, has the town looked in the past or will it look to another source other than getting our water from the ground of Plainville? Can we get water from New Britain Reservoir or other sources that are not groundwater?
Yeah, and, you know, in the operation of a private water company, you know, they're overseen by, you know, PURA in terms of, you know, rates and, you know, capital, you know, investments and whatnot. You know, so the town really isn't involved in that type of process. We can certainly help facilitate it and make sure that all of the issues are looked at. And, you know, New Britain Water Company had some issues this year with supply. And that's one thing, if there's one thing that, you know, the Valley Water System had was, you know, we didn't have any, you know, Valley Water didn't have any supply issues, you know, even during the drought. So there was plenty of water available. You know, it's questionable about with regards to some people, you know, wanting to drink the water. But, you know, so I think it will be explored, but it's going to have to be negotiated if that's actually a preferred option.
Okay. Well, I guess as a follow-up then, how much say does the town of Plainville have in who provides its water?
Very little. Very little. It's more determined at the state level.
Okay.
Does somebody from PURA want to take, you know, help us with that? I mean, am I saying anything that's inaccurate?
You're not saying anything that's accurate.
Okay. All right. It's really regulated at the state level. You know, they determine who gets the franchise for providing water in the individual towns, you know, who, you know, and it's done through a, through a process. Anybody else? And then we'll come back over here. Giving Scott a little bit of a walk around here. That's why we have the younger people do this.
Hey, good evening. My name's Tom Steppen. I live over near the Woodford, I guess, well source. I guess I want to thank you guys for coming out tonight and talking to us, but I have similar concerns as to the young lady back there, that a lot of things that you were saying tonight is a little bit patronizing, just with the fact that we all have problems here and you're telling us what you're doing, what the plan is. But you're not necessarily telling us, you know, what the concerning things in our water may be. Calcium and magnesium, you say is good for our diets, but what about the, you know, chemicals that may be seeping through the ground into the water supply beneath our feet, excuse me, beneath our feet, and what you're doing maybe to remove that specifically, I guess, the herbicides and pesticides that we all use to take care of our lawn and kill the bugs that are, you know, in the grass and wherever. How that gets down into the water and how, and what you guys would do to remove those things. That's, I think, the most concern to me because, like this woman over here with the concern for chemical and chemicals in the water, how you guys would test for that and, you know, even leave it out of your stat sheet here. You would include things like odor, but not bacteria or herbicide, pesticide, or even fluoride for that matter. It's an added chemical in our water and we have no way of knowing how much is in it unless we go independently test for it.
Okay. A couple of things, and I'm going to call somebody from the Department of Public Health to, you know, talk about some of those issues. But I will let you know that all of these tests that we've recently done, the water company is also required to do tests for some of those organic and inorganic materials that you're, you know, concerned about. So like, so those tests are done on a fairly regular basis. But I'm going to bring somebody from the Department of Public Health who could, you know, address specifically what you just brought forward.
Good question. Good question.
Thank you.
There's over 90 contaminants that are tested for. These were specific to what we were finding. That's why these are on this spreadsheet. We wouldn't have enough room on eight spreadsheets to show everything else that's tested for. There's volatile organics, there's inorganics, there's pesticides, there's a whole host of other things. There's radionucal ides that are tested for, fluoride sample results. That information statewide, not only Valley, but statewide, all those large systems test for all of those 90 contaminants. Most of those are requirements in the Safe Drinking Water Act. I mentioned, there's all these different rules. There's lead and copper, there's groundwater rule. There's all of these different rules that deal with a different variety of contaminants that are out there, man-made as well as natural. So all of that information is sent electronically when they do this testing. And testing, as Don mentioned, is going on daily, is going on weekly, going on monthly, quarterly, every six months, every three years. I mean, all that information, dependent upon the different contaminant, that information is coming to us electronically in the health department. We store all that information in our data system and our people analyze whether or not those are meeting the maximum contaminant levels or not. And if they, if they do get above that maximum contaminant level, we're working with the water company to address it and they have to address the issue. So if there's an exceedance anywhere within those maximum levels, the water company has to be responsible. Now specifically, that information, either we could share that or the water company, turn it to Don, to share that information with you, because that's something, that's a great question. Because not only on the spreadsheet, there's just a small amount of information there versus the, an awful lot of data that's going on and testing that's going on constantly. So I'll turn it over to Don. And what we could do is share our data with you. We could get it over to the town and see, you know, share with you over the last three years what the results are that we have in our data system. And certainly, you know, Don could take that, I'll take that on as well. So Don, if you wanted.
A great question, as Laurie said. First of all, we produce a consumer confidence report every year annually. It has to be in the hands of the consumers July 1st. We're preparing that right now. We're going to mention that we exceeded, as an example, on an average basis, sodium. I think we had some numbers around 30, 35 parts per million. But notwithstanding that, we test for pesticides on a continual basis. We test for volatile organic compounds and we test daily for bacteria. Chlorine residuals are a good indicator. We get reports weekly from Tungus Lab, independent lab, we have no control over them, certified by the state. They discuss and tell us, you know, if we had any coliform, as an example. Some of the more exotic contaminants that you mentioned, we test for on a periodic basis. It could be quarterly, it could be yearly. That's one of the things that is, takes a major part of our operation of any water system, not only us, but everybody. Everybody's faced with this and rightly so. I mean, we're talking about the health effects that, you know, from ingestion of water that comes out of municipal public supplies. So, and I get concerned about this. I'm the first one that receives these results. They go next to the field supervisor and then they go right to the front office. And we do what we call compliance reporting on a regular basis. So I think your fears are, you know, a little bit overblown on this, if I may use that expression. I don't think there's anything to worry about relative to contaminants, the safety of the water. What we have here is really an aesthetic issue and that's really the hardness issue. And we're trying to address that.
Thank you. Just real quick then, I appreciate the, you know, the tests that you do, but can you make those available to me, not just the basic annual?
Yeah, we'll make sure they get up.
Reports?
We'll get access to them, the town, and we will put them up on our website.
And if you don't mind, just telling us what type of detergents and things you put into the water to, I guess, let's just say, clean or kill any organic or anything that may be in the water. What else would you add into the water supply that we would be ingesting?
The only thing that we add to raw water is to comply with disinfection, to make sure that we're in compliance with all the parameters that are part of the state's drinking water requirements. So to be specific, chlorine, fluoride and phosphate. The chlorine, we measure daily at each plant. I think we run about a 45 parts per million total chlorine residual and about what you would say, what we would call 40 parts per million free chlorine residual. So that's the chlorine. In addition, we measure what the chlorine residual at certain locations is out in the distribution system because we want to make sure that the chlorine residual is getting out there. Now, chlorine residuals are important to us. They're a defense against bacteria. That's really the reason for chlorination. Fluoride, I'm not sure how that originated, but we measure fluoride on a daily basis. And the last I knew, our limits were somewhere between .8 parts per million and 1.2 parts per million. And so we monitor that through metering pumps and we calibrate those meter pumps if, you know, if we see a trend. But we're consistently in between with those limits. So that's pretty much what we do.
Thank you.
And just one further thing. I would be happy to supply and share with you all the test results that we have. I think that was important to you. It's all public information. Be happy to do that.
Hello, my name is George. At my parents' house, we had to replace the furnace in there twice within 14 years. And the only explanation that, because the water tanks in there were eaten through, and the plumber says, this has been a known fact in Plainville for a very long time, that this water is just bad for anything. My question is, what took so long to get to this point? If we've known this water has been hard for all these years, why are we just now getting into looking for solutions? It took a push of people apparently to do it, but this is something that should have been looked at earlier, I would think.
Yes, I understand your question. You were concerned about the heating system and...
No, I was just trying to explain how bad the water is because of the furnace in my parents' house. We replaced two furnaces in 14 years. So, and the plumber has said, this has been known for years that this water has been like it is, very destructive. What took so long to get to this point when it's been known for years that this water is this hard? Why are we just now getting into it?
Well, a couple of things in response to your question. And I think we have to talk about corrosivity. And I want to be careful with this, but I think all indications show that Valley's water, Plainville's water is not corrosive. At least that's how we feel about it and we believe that testing will support that. As an example, you could start with pH. You could also take a look at our lead and copper results, which we perform every three years. Also, whereas you may get blue-green stain on plumbing fixtures and other utilities, I have very, in fact, I can't remember hearing a complaint about blue-green stain. All indications that the water is alkaline as opposed to being corrosive. Now, relative to boilers, what may be happening is there may be some scale occurring within the heat exchanger. And that's basically a consequence of hard water. I think it goes to, you know, what are some of the preventive measures that we can do to minimize that? Why have we come to this point? How long has it taken to at least address this? You know, we're aware that we've had hard water. We are sensitive to customer complaints. We know there's hard water. We have kind of polled our customers probably about a dozen years ago, and we had to do that because there's a capital cost associated with softening water supplies. And that's a very difficult point to swallow, if you will, in the eyes of many, many of our customers. As a matter of fact, there are many customers that are very happy with the water. There are no complaints. You know, there's a group, you know, there's, you know, I'm not saying that it's not an issue. It is an aesthetic issue. But I just want to say that sensitivities vary from, you know, household to household, taste to taste. The hard water situation, though, we acknowledge, you know, impacts water supplies rather plumbing, fixtures and heating. And we acknowledge that. Does that answer your question?
Probably not.
Probably not.
It doesn't really answer the question. It's why does it take so long to get to this point outside of cost, but it should have been brought up a lot earlier, I would have thought.
George, it really does come down, you know, to the balance of cost versus, you know, making the improvements. I think, why is it being addressed now? Part of it is because of social media and that it would have just made it easier for people to express their concerns about the water system. The fact that we received a lot of complaints and a lot of concerns that were expressed led to, you know, bringing the group together to say, hey, let's take a look at this once and for all and see if there's something that can be done. I'm not sure that we can look back as much because, you know, while we've, while, you know, I've been here 13 years and I've heard anecdotal concerns about the water and, you know, but I don't think there's been a real, you know, drive or a lot of people getting together to express, you know, their opinion all at one time. It really did come to a certain amount of crescendo, at least in my opinion, you know, in November and December. And I think part of it was because of social media and part of it was because we made it easier for, I thought we made it easier or we encouraged people, hey, if you got an issue, let us know about it so we can, we could take a look at it. So we're trying to look forward, but I think that's part of it. There's a cost associated with this. And, you know, we've been through rate, you know, rate processes where, you know, people come in and say, hey, I'm paying too much for water. So, you know, as a water company, they can be sensitive to, hey, this is going to cost money. So should we really suggest something from our perspective, meaning the water company's perspective, you know, to increase rates? And I think there's a nervousness about that. But if it's coming from the customers, that's a little different perspective. Person in the blue, Scott?
She had a question.
Yeah, but she?
Well, I don't have a question, I just have a comment.
Okay.
I grew up in New Britain. I'm Colette Casey. I live on Hollyberry Lane and we never had this problem, obviously. And I moved here 28 years ago and I have complained year after year. I've talked to Valley Water several times. They've told, they've given me the runaround, basically. And living here for 28 years, it's the same water. I buy my bottled water. I have a filter on the house. I can't even put the water in the filter water. I can't even put that into my iron because it still has that white resid- I can't even put that into my iron because it still has that white residence, and it kills all the elements in my iron. So I have to buy bottled water just for my iron, just for my steamer. I've had plumbing problems where I had to replace the fixtures, and when I've told Valley Water this, they told me, I'm the only one that's been complaining. I've sat here right now, and I've heard a lot of people complaining, so I know it's not just me. They've given me the runaround, and they've told me that, well, Bristol has hard water. Well, Southington. But I said, I don't pay my money to Bristol or Southington. If they have problems, they can take care of it themselves. I pay my taxes here. I want my water fixed here. I don't care about anybody else's water. My water, I feel, is unsafe, and I feel like I've put a lot of money into my water. I have a plumber here, that's my husband, that also has done several things to the house to try to bring it up to par, and it's still not up to par. And it's very, very frustrating, because I'm sitting here, and I know nothing's going to get done. And if something does get done, it's going to come out of our pockets, just like it's been coming out of my pocket for twenty-eight years. So I'm very frustrated, and I know a lot of other people here. I'm very happy that they came here, because now I can share my thoughts, how I felt for twenty-eight years, how this water has been terrible, and it has not been up to par. And I hope that if you do anything, that you listen to us tonight, and you take this and try to change some of this, because we really do want this hardness to stop. We're fed up with it. We're tired of buying new appliances. We're tired of buying bottled water. We're just sick of it, and we want it to be stopped, and we hope that you will do something about it.
I live over on Woodford Avenue, on Hamlin Water's Edge, so I'm in a condo. So I know that you guys are saying that the two wells are being treated equally, just the same, although I've heard differently, that one has a different filtering process, whereas mine doesn't. But I know you're saying they're being treated the same. So I guess my question is, if they're being treated the same, what's causing the difference to my little area of the red map? Because clearly that's significant. And what do I do to reduce the hardness? I know you said it's going to be a six-month process and so on, but being in a condo, I can't put in a softener. It's literally not possible to do. So I have, you know, a filter on my showerhead and things like that, but I don't even want to redo my bathroom, because the fixtures are just going to get destroyed. So what do I do to just reduce the hardness in the meantime? And why, why is there such a difference in my area compared to the other area of the town?
Well, I think we all agree that the water is hard. That's the main theme here, and that's what we've concluded through testing and everything else. But your question has to do, why is your water hard? Because you live near the Woodford Ave area. And the answer simply is that the water coming out of Woodford Ave is harder, you know, relatively speaking, than the Johnson Ave well field. And so you get somewhat harder water than that. What concerns me is that, you know, the responses that we allegedly, you know, have given to our customers, and we like to at least be a little bit more responsive and be more attentive, be more accurate, I guess, in our reporting. I think that's coming up. But that doesn't address the hardness. We're very concerned about our customer service and our response, and Nick has shown you some of the things that we're going to be taking into account. The hardness is a situation that we all agree exists, but we have to say that we're going to evaluate the options that we have, but they all come associated with a cost. And that's part of the capital cost that the DPU, beg your pardon, PURA, will look at. You know, they're going to say, okay, you're justified in doing this, but that is the reality of it. I can't express it any other way.
What can I do right now?
There's really nothing you can do. You can, you say you can't install a softener. You may be able to install some sort of an inline filter. We could discuss that with you if you call us tomorrow or next week. Please do. We will listen to you, and we will make recommendations. And if you don't have the answers that you're satisfied with, I encourage you to call me personally.
John, can I have one question?
If you come up, if you come up forward, so everybody can hear you. Oh, oh. Sorry, Shane, I didn't really have the mic on.
Just one real quick thing, because I think there might be a little misunderstanding about what's going on. Neither the Woodford supply nor the Johnson Avenue supply are being treated for hardness at this time. The hardness is the naturally occurring characteristic of the water at those two sites. It just so happens that Woodford, the aquifer and the natural calcium levels in the water at that site are higher than Johnson. Okay? So just to make sure that you understood that, when we say we're treating the water at both places, neither site is being treated specifically for hardness.
So we've got something you guys have been talking about?
Exactly. Right. And it's a naturally occurring process that, that's what it is, you know, when it comes out of the ground.
So it just happens to be a natural thing that aren't working?
Exactly. You got it. Yep.
So then, why do I get it?
Well, that's, we're going to try to put on the website, like, for your particular case, you know, there are products available to buy to put in the dishwasher or to clean this and that. That's what Nick was talking about. We'll try to get more of that information on the website, now that we're hypersensitive to it. And hopefully, in your case, that would be a help, since you can't put in a whole-house softener. And maybe we can all learn something in that process.
I live in the Woodford area. I'm just going to ask you guys to stop using the word aesthetic. Aesthetic is when there's a scratch on something. Aesthetic is when something doesn't look pleasing. We're not talking about just white film that we can just wash off and move on. We're talking about spending thousands and thousands of dollars on filtration systems or on damaged appliances, on our furnaces. So every time we hear that word aesthetic, it feels a little bit insulting. So I don't know what word to use, but aesthetic isn't the right word.
Scott, right here.
I find it very confusing, all right? You've known for thirty years that there's been hard water, okay? And we're going along hard water, okay? And you all know all the effects it has. It ruins your appliances, even filters, costs you great deals of money, okay? There's water that you can't even drink out of your own faucet, and you know that, because you know that's where the hard water is. And it's just baffling to me to stop and think that, we've known it for thirty years, okay? Granted, we probably will, we're probably going to have to go ahead and get this treatment center, and we're going to pay for it in the net, all right? My question is, weren't there things that you could have done along the way? I mean, smaller things? If they got filters for a home, couldn't you put some filtering systems on the water that's flowing from the pump systems? Couldn't you add, if the filters weren't doing it, couldn't you add a line of filters to help that with it? It just seems so hard, that you knew it's hard water. You know just exactly what it does, okay? And this is only just a small handful of people in this entire town that are all suffering from this. And, you know, we talk, and I feel absolutely horrible for those people that have even hard water. Now, some of you are really lucky. You guys are really lucky, all right? He got a little bit better water. But for most of us, we're not that lucky, are we?
No.
Okay? And I can't wrap my brain around the fact that with all of your intelligence and all of your background and all of your research and all of your testing, that over these thirty years, you couldn't do something? Just something that could help a bit? They don't make an industrial size filter to soften water a little bit? I mean, we aren't asking you to give us beautiful spring water, just something that I can drink out of the tap, something that I can spray on my car and not take the next two hours wiping off all of the water spots, okay? The fact that I do my dishes by hand, because the dishwasher makes everything horrible. Every night, I have to do the dishes by hand. Why? Because we have hard water, okay? Is there a logical answer as to why? In thirty years, you said back in nineteen eighty-four, in over thirty years, okay? Now, other things have happened. All we have to worry about, we put fluoride in the water, okay? We have pesticides, like he's talking about. We put special chemicals to take care of that. I just don't understand, with something this large and having such a great effect in so many different ways, in health, in people that don't, can't put a filter in, and all who say that we don't, that we haven't done anything about the hard water. Thank you.
Do we want to conclude on that note?
No, I have a question.
Okay. Not trying to encourage you, I just...
I got an easy question. You mentioned, Don, you mentioned lead and copper before. Do you add any corrosion control elements to the water? I watched the PBS thing on Flint.
Was the question, do we add any corrosion control to the water?
Yes.
We do not. It's a naturally occurring pH level, which runs somewhere in the vicinity of about seven two to seven three, seven four. So there's no need to add anything that's, you know, guards against corrosion, because the water's not corrosive. The water's hard. It's scaling that takes place, but it's not corrosive, so there's no corrosive injection for anything like that.
Okay.
That's a roundabout way to say no.
I said it was a yes or no.
They're very risk.
Yeah, we've had some discussion about whether, you know, the corrosive nature of the water, so I'd like the Department of Public Health and Law to give a little perspective there.
I like what you had to say. And I don't think I have a good answer for you, but I want to try to explain a little bit. You know, gentleman's point back there, there's ninety contaminants, at least over ninety contaminants, that are tested for, that have very specific requirements. If you trigger a maximum contaminant level, you must do something. And we, that's our job, is to enforce that. And for forty years, over the Safe Drinking Water Act since nineteen seventy-four, the federal government has been telling the states what to do. You shall do this, you shall do that. And they give us, they give us a little bit of money, millions of dollars, as a matter of fact, to support my staff. And there's state money that comes in to support my staff. There's forty-five of us there. And over the last forty years, the federal government continuously changes the rules, constantly, telling us, here's what's important, as far as health goes. And so I hear your frustration, because I have the same, you know, I'm the chief of this group, and I, you know, if something goes wrong, twenty-four, seven, I get the phone call. My staff get the phone call. We go out in the field, we work with the water utility to fix these things. But the focus has been on maximum contaminant level triggers. Now, any one of the things on that sheet was triggered to say, well, if calcium had an MCL and it was triggered, we would have been working on it, but it doesn't. So what caused, so the most frustrating, some of the most frustrating part of my job is when I hear people can't drink the water. And we work so hard at our state, and I talked to Dr. Pettit here, and we're working on a state water plan. And I just came from meetings at PURA in New Britain, and my colleagues at, and Jack Bukowski and Betsy Wingfield from DEEP, and Dave Levasseur from OPM, and the people within those four agencies, including myself and my commissioners, have worked really hard to make sure we can balance all the needs for water supply, so that our water can, we'd have enough for the future. But it's so frustrating to hear people, because we, not only, you're not the only utility that, we get phone calls and say, you know, I can't drink the water, because it looks like it's brown today or yellow today. And it's very frustrating to me to hear, but I'm trying to explain it a little bit, is that we're driven a lot by the maximum contaminant levels. And the good news, and what we're here to tell you today, they meet all the standards. We did a lot of sampling. We took a lot of information, summarized it all. But I think we're led by the Safe Drinking Water Act, not by people saying, wait a minute, you're, my dishwasher won't work, my coffee maker won't work, I can't, it won't soap up, I can't do this. That is not tripping a maximum contaminant level, and I think that's some of the explanation. But to me, to me, it's frustrating as well, because we work really hard in our state to have high-quality sources of water and to make sure people can drink the water, because we don't want you spending money on bottled water. We want you spending your money on your water system so you can drink that water and feel that it's safe every day to pull from that tap, for yourself, for your kids, for your infants, for women that are expecting children. You want to feel safe drinking that water. So it's a source of frustration as well, and that's why we did what we did. And we're going to stay and help, and that's, you know, as much as we can. And I hear your frustration, believe me. As far as Flint, Michigan, we're lucky here in the state of Connecticut, because we are focused on, the lead and copper rule really has been a corrosion control treatment, very focused on treatment. So there is some treatment in your water system for corrosion control. All the larger systems have it in the state of Connecticut, and we track and monitor lead and copper exceedances under that rule. Things are going to change in the future. The federal government's working on that due to Flint, Michigan. So you're going to see changes that come about. But I share, and I'm responsible, my group here are responsible for water quality, water quantity statewide. So I share your frustration when you say you cannot drink your water. That's frustrating to me. So we're here to help. We're here to work with the town yourselves, and I hope maybe at some point in the future we could come back, and we can hear from the water company. This is what we did. This is what we're studying. This is how we're going to maybe blend water and change things for you. So that's what, that's what I'd like to see as an outcome, sir. So I don't know if I've helped or harmed.
Well, I just needed to have it clarified in the fact that, so you're saying that you're being dictated to by government?
Well, I am the government, too.
State level or federal level, okay? All right. So that means that you really weren't able to do anything?
Well, our focus, I think our area of focus has been the chemicals that do undue harm to people, acute-risk chemicals. Like if you found E. coli in your water, you're shutting down the water system. We are, we're issuing, they're issuing boil water notice. I mean, those are acute risk, and we are after that all the time.
I understand.
You know, and so it's a matter of risk, you know, and it's the risk-based analysis, and we go after the risk-based analysis. So if calcium doesn't have the risk that an E. coli has, that's what we focus on. And the volatile organic compounds, the other ones that have MCLs.
Don't you feel that it is a social issue for...
Oh, absolutely. That's why we're here.
Thousands and thousands of dollars a year on dishwashers because of hard water and clothes that stink and... Dishwashers because of hard water and, and clothes that stink and bathrooms that have a horrible smell.
Yes.
Because of hard water.
All right.
And it goes on and on.
But that's why we're here. I can't explain to you the last 30 years.
I understand.
Right. But I can explain to you now what we're trying to do.
Okay. Fix my hard water. What are you going to tell me? What will you say to me?
One of the solutions, and many of the solutions that the, Tom, the engineers, they're going to be looking at, one of the slides, is, is quite important to pay close attention to. You know, when, when the town puts the slides up there, you can take a closer look at them because they were hard for me to read, I couldn't see the slides. But the details of what the town, what, what Tom and the engineering firm that Valley's hired to do, to pull that information together, to look at all the options and opportunities that are out there. There's options for mixing surface water from your surrounding neighbors. Now, your surrounding neighbors, as, as, as Robert mentioned, well, maybe they have, maybe they want to share water, maybe they don't, but that's a lot, there's a lot in negotiating around that. So bringing in some surface water may be able to help, provide some relief to the hard water. But looking at that carefully is really very important because nothing is without a cost. And, and also, we spoke about the difference in the water quality between the two wellfields. That is definitely the truth. And taking a closer look at that will help. Is there one well in particular, in that particular wellfield, that maybe you could reduce the take on that because that has the high wa, high hardness in it? But that's going to all be studied, and I think that's going to take a little bit of time. Why has it taken 30 years? I can't expla, I can't explain that to you. I can't explain. I have been around for 30 years, but I haven't been in charge for 30 years. But I, you know, I, like, I've mentioned to Robert, I said, when, when he called me and let me know about what he's been hearing in the complaints and the concerns of the town council and what was happening here, that, I said, you know, we're going to do what we can. We don't have limitless resources at the state, but we certainly can offer testing. We can come here and have my engineers involved. We provide oversight. Anything that's being proposed by the water companies for technical changes, my engineers, Tom will be the lead, Vicky will be involved, and Austin and Mike, those four engineers sitting right there that you've met and you can go and talk to, they will be involved with reviewing any of those technical changes. So I just, I hope I've helped with that, Robert. I don't know.
The reality is, in Connecticut and in Plainville in particular, that the water, the private water systems that are run and even the public water systems that are run, any, any of the operational costs, any of the capital costs of running those systems are going to be paid for by the customers. There's nobody else that's going to come in and supplement the cost of those systems. And so we have a, you know, a 6,800 customer system that, that, you know, any, any changes to it are going to, are going to be paid for, paid for by the customers. That's why we have PURA, Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, because what they do is they go into the books of the water company and they make sure that they're not price gouging you. So that, you know, there's a balance there between, you know, the, the issue of, of what you pay for water against, you know, the improvements and the operational cost. So when you say, well, you're going to charge us for it, well, you know, there's nobody out there that's going to pay for it. And, and, and that's just the reality of, of the situation. And, you know, at some point in time, hopefully over the next six months, eight months, you know, we will be back here in a forum such as this and, and have a conversation about, well, this is what could be done, this is what the cost would be. So we, do you want to do it on a system-wide basis? Through the water company? Or do you want to do it on an individual basis? And there may be a lot of people in this community that come out and say, hey, my water's fine. You know, and, you know, you know, frankly, you know, and, sir, you know, I, I understand your frustration. But, you know, we advertise this, this, this forum pretty extensively. And while I'm pleased and I'm happy that you came out, and, and not only happy that you came out, but that you stayed the whole time, and, and I hope you feel that we've put out some type effort, I would have liked to have seen more people here tonight. You know, for, for, for a water system that's as terrible, and I'm not debating whether you're right or wrong, I actually believe what you're saying. You know, I, I would have expected that we would have had 200 people here. And that's, that's somewhat disappointing.
Some people are just complacent.
And, and, and that's part of it. Some people are just complacent. And, and, you know, I can tell you that in the 13 years that I've been here as town manager, we haven't had one person come to the town council meeting and complain about the quality of the water. We've had people come to the rate hearing and talk about it, and we had a rate hearing, you know, four or five years ago, and that was a handful of people. So I hear what you're saying, but, you know, our most difficult, and I, and I say this fairly often, the most difficult part of our job as local town people, as a town manager, is trying to figure out what 51% of the people in this town want. And that's, that's not easy to do. But as Laurie said, if we can't drink the water, and there's a significant amount of people that can't drink the water, we're going to get to the bottom of it and we're going to make a decision as a community. And I hope that you'll be a little bit more patient. I, I think we've gone a, a longer distance than, than, you know, over the last couple of months that have been done over the last 30 years. I believe that the water company is responding. I think they're changing, I think they're willing to change, and, and, and I hope that we do come up with something that will be cost-effective and effective in terms of water quality. So I thank you for coming. I'm going to ask Dr. Pettit to come up because he worked with a, with the group, he's your state representative as well, and, and give him a chance to make some concluding remarks. And then if anybody wants to stay afterwards and come down and talk to us individually, we would welcome to do that as well. I know the state people are getting a little anxious, you know, they're not used to coming out to, but I know that they'll stay for a few minutes, few minutes longer as well. So, Dr. Pettit.
Well, thank you, everybody, and I think Robert did a great job summing it up. My comments would be, first in the form of thanks, I've been up there for five months and was on appropriations and the folks from the Department of Public Health, water quality are an excellent group of people, and it was actually one of the few sections in the budget where a bunch of us in our caucus sat around and thought, don't go squeal to me, to the governor or anybody, we thought they actually needed some more funding and some more people, that they're actually a little bit underfunded and don't have enough staff to take care of the water in the state, which is a big concern, especially given Flint and other areas around the country. So I think they've done a great job. I'd really like to thank Robert and the council, Mrs. Pagliisi, Mrs. Tompkins, Mrs. Maranti for putting this together, and the water company for being really so forthcoming and being responsive to this issue. Tackle Robert's comments, I believe everything what people are saying, but one of the issues we had, this, this map is nice and it gives us a little bit of pattern. Scott will tell you, because he put together the map, one of the perplexing things with one of the initial maps we put up is that we'd have a street, my old, my street, my old street, Broad Street. There'd be somebody at 140 that says, the water's terrible. Someone at 144 says, the water's great. Somebody at 160 says, well, it's okay. And somebody at 170 that, so there was no rhyme to reason, it looked like a shotgun blast. There was, some people thought it was great, some people thought it was okay, and some people thought it was terrible. So he said, geez, is it, is it mains, is it pipes in people's own houses? What is the issue? Why does this look like, why is there no pattern to what's going on? So this is one of the more helpful pieces of information we've come up with in terms of, in terms of mapping. So it was really confusing in the beginning because we got such disparate evaluations from the public about what they felt about their water and water quality. But I think this has been a great, a great process. I think it's been done very scientifically and very fairly, and I think we are going to see an improvement. So I think, I hope you'll give the town, the state, the water company a little bit of time, but I think we're going to see an improvement and come forward with some suggestions as to how we can deal with the, the hardness in, in the water that's affecting people's quality of life and people's appliances and the like. But I really thank you for, for coming out. You're, you're the participators, the people that are going to help make a change because two or three had showed up, there probably would have been no change. The fact that there's 40 or 50 people out here, I think we're going to have a change. That's sort of a ground swell. So really thank you very much, and I thank everybody for coming. I guess the one final comment, and Robert made it as well, PURA's got your back in terms, in terms of the rates. If we have to put money into the system, it's, you know, I'm on, I'm on Redstone Hill, so I'm, I'm sort of in that orange, orange area there, you know, on the Bristol border. A lot of people think we're on wells, but we're, we're on, we're on valley water. So we're sort of in the middle of the road in terms of, terms of hardness. And so it may cost, it may cost a few bucks, but I think it probably is going to be well worth it in terms of quality of life. So really thank everybody for participating, and I think as Robert said, everybody's going to stick around and answer a few questions if need be. So thanks very much, everybody.
We did tape this tonight on Nutmeg Network, and we thank them for coming out. We will, we will try to advertise when this will be on TV. So if your, your neighbors or your friends that at least want to watch the program, you know, that'll be available as well. We'll probably post, post a link to it as well, so. All right, thank you again.